Okay, you guys ready? Okay, I'll call the order of Sparks City Council Meeting on February 10th, 2020 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson. Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams. City Manager Croods.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, if you all please stand for the invocation, today's speaker is Pastor Steve Bond from Summit Christian Church. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Would we bow to pray? Lord, we want to thank you this afternoon for another spectacularly beautiful day and we're mindful that you have allowed us to live in this region, in this city, and at so many levels, we see prosperity and blessing upon this city. We know every good and perfect gift comes from you, and so we give you thanks for it. We thank you, Father, for the peace in our neighborhoods, and I'm mindful today, Father, that our first responders in the early part of this year, especially police, they've had some challenges, and Father, I want to lift those men and women up to you now and ask for grace and blessing in their lives, give them wisdom as they deal with sometimes very complicated situations. We pray for the leadership here in this city, Lord, for those that I'm standing before, that each man and woman would have wisdom in their decision-making. I pray, Father, that behind the closed doors, that there would be good dialogue, there would be careful listening, and I pray, Father, in the thorny issues that they may be dealing with, that you would reach, help them to reach consensus, where this city would be known as a city of great progress but great unity as well. We continue to pray, Father, for Mayor Smith, for his healing, for his strength, grant him wisdom as he shepherds this great city that we live in. And I pray now, Father, for the proceedings here in this afternoon's gathering. Father, would you help dialogue to take place that would be helpful in every way? And when decisions need to be made, Father, would you guide in those decisions, that our city would continue to be one blessed and guided by you, and we give you thanks, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Steve. If you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Mr. Dare, would you lead us?
Sure, would anyone, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak, would you please fill out a card? And if you haven't filled one up, we'll get you to speak, and then we can fill out the card afterwards. So, our first speaker is Mike Widmer. Come on up, Mike, welcome.
Good after. We're good, we're good. Well, good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Michael Widmer, and I'm with my partner Chuck Slaven, and we are local citizens. We've, he's born and raised, I've been only here about forty years as all. And we are engaging ourselves in a, with a national organization called Foundation Forward, and they're sole, they're a 501 nonprofit registered in the state of Nevada, and their sole objective is to build replicas of the charters of freedom, which are the Declaration of Independence, the U.S. Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. And they are replicas of what are now found at the National Archives in Washington, D.C. So, our intention is to build replicas in this community, and I'll let Chuck speak for a moment.
Yes, thank you. We are both associated with a nonprofit educational organization called Foundation Forward. As Mike mentioned, the sole purpose of this organization is to build replicas of our nation's charters of freedom that's on display at the National Archives in Washington, D.C. Two years ago, we dedicated the first setting west of the Mississippi. That was at the courthouse on Musser Street in Carson City. Subsequently, and I think you have a photo of that setting.
We do.
Subsequently, we got approval from Washoe County to build the identical display at the site of the old courthouse on Virginia Street. We think it's a beautiful location. During the design process, we worked with Strucky Meadows Community College Architectural Landscape Students to come up with a landscape design, and at that point, we learned that we also needed to go before the City of Reno's Historic Resource Commission to get their approval, that being because the courthouse is on their register of historic buildings. Mike has been our lead guy in trying to work through that process, and he could probably give you a better update on where we are today and what needs to be done.
Well, to be short, we went before this commission in August, and we were unanimously rejected because they felt that our charters of freedom were not appropriate for the courthouse, and I'm still a little mystified by that. But we went back to Washoe County and lamented, and they said, move forward, we're behind you. So, we are working with their staff and with the City of Reno staff, and we will be reapproaching this commission, the Historical Resources Commission, in April. And with that, we had done a little redesign, we're quite hopeful. However, there's always a fly in the ointment, so we would appreciate any sort of a letter of recommendation or support for our project, and you have our cards, so we're available at any time for any questions.
Thank you. Keep us posted. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. 5.1, approval of the agenda. Look for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the agenda.
Looking for a second? Mr. Abbott.
Second.
You know, I'd like to change, I'd like to change it up a little bit and put 7.2 ahead of 7.1, if you don't mind.
No, I'll go ahead and amend that, to go ahead and move that.
How about the second?
I'm good with that.
Okay, we have a motion to second any further discussion. Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council Workshop for January 13th, 2020, and the Sparks City Council Meeting for January 27th, 2020. Looking for a motion? Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve the minutes and the workshop and the council meeting.
Okay, and looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to announcements, presentation, recognition items of special interest, and we'll go to 7.2, accommodation for Champagne Dentistry. Come on down, you brought the whole crew. You know, I went to the, to the National Dental Day at Champagne Dentistry, and I believe you had about 140 people there. It was, it was, it was just wonderful, it was good to see everybody was laughing and having fun and took care of a lot of dental needs for the young people. So, I'd like to read the proclamation that I didn't give you that day, I wanted you to come here, and I know you got to get back, you have a patient waiting, don't you? Okay, whereas February is National Children's Dental Health Month, and Champagne Pediatric Dentistry and Champagne Family Dentistry is kicking off Saturday, February 1st, by collaborating with the Northern Nevada Dental Society and dental volunteers from the Reno and Sparks community to offer free dental care to more than 130 kids from Northern Nevada. And whereas the 10th Annual Give Kids A Smile Event, held at both of the Champagne Dental Offices in Sparks, provide preventative dental care, emergency treatment, and restorative care worth more than $65,000 to families who expressed a great need for access to dental care. And whereas the dental community in Northern Nevada is passionate and dedicated to helping those less fortunate, each year, the number of volunteer dental providers for this event grows, as does the number of children helped and amount of donated services. Between 2017 and 2019, Northern Nevada dental volunteers donated more than $207,000 of services to children through Give Kids A Smile. Now, therefore, I, Ronald Smith, Mayor of the City of Sparks, do hereby join with the City Council in commanding Champagne Dentistry and the Northern Nevada Dental Community for the generous donation of their time and services to our community. Thank you for everything that you've done. Jason, say a word, say a few words, please. Sit down in that chair and say a few words for me. Yeah, you will sit down, and you will say a few words.
Much appreciated. Mayor Smith, thank you so much for the invitation. We, myself and my team at Champagne Family Dentistry and Champagne Pediatric Dentistry are, we're extremely proud to be able to host this event. We look forward to it every year, but this, this event really wouldn't happen if it weren't for the generous volunteers of the dentists in our Northern Nevada community. Each year, as you said in there, it gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and it becomes less of a challenge and a struggle to get volunteer dentists, hygienists, and auxiliary staff to come and give their time for us. So, we're, I'm proud to be a part of it and look forward to the event continuing to grow year after year.
Well, thanks for being a part of it. I know that you told me when I got down there that they were in line when you went to open up the dental offices for them, so it's very popular. This guy's going to move to Sparks pretty soon, he told me he loves Sparks. Let's get a picture, okay? And then, then you can get back. Okay, thanks, you guys. Okay, 7.1, accommodation for Edward C. Reed High School Raider Band, come on down. Welcome. I'm with the band. Right here, right over here. Welcome. Mr. Dare.
Yes, so I'm honored to have these guys come, these guys are all from Reed High School, they just got back from London, actually representing us and doing an amazing job, and they're going to tell you a little more about it, but if you want to sit down, say your name, maybe what you, instrument you play, and how was your time in London?
And there's two, there's two microphones there, so.
Oh, I speak in the mic, okay.
So, say your name first.
My name is Ilario Sanchez. I, I'm the drum major who like conducts time in the band, and my time in London was pretty fun, I love the subway station over there, their meat pies are pretty good.
I'm Emily Hudson, I'm a percussionist at Edward C. Reed High School. My time in London was pretty fun, my favorite part was the London Eye.
The what?
The London Eye, the big Ferris wheel.
My name is Abigail Peterson, I'm the color guard captain at Reed High School, which is like the flags. My time in London was once in a lifetime, it was like super cold, but you'll never be able to live up to that, so.
Now, before you read the proclamation, I understand that you were invited to London. When they came out, we were there for that.
Hi, my name's Ron Iceson, the band director at Reed High School, it's my sixth year at the high school. My first year, we were 42, and this year, we were 100, so we're the largest instrumental music program in Northern Nevada, which is really, really cool, especially because we're in a slightly older area of the city, and so we've had so much growth, which has been just based on the wonderful students in the community, and so we appreciate that. We applied to go to the parade two years ago, and we used a performance that was of higher quality that we had done at the end of the year. We got accepted, and it was a really cool experience for the kids. We took 86 people to London between two different planes through two, through two cities of customs, which was interesting, and we sent all our instruments there, and it all got back, and we kept the same people that we went with, which was cool.
Nobody extra?
No, no, no. The kids, they got a chance to take a photo in front of Buckingham Palace, they went to Hampton Court, they went to Windsor Castle. We marched in front of Parliament by the Big Ben Clock, we were by Westminster Abbey, it was really cool. We took a wide variety of socioeconomic status students that went, and we, with the help of our local Walmart off of Pyramid, we got a donation to cover a couple of students that couldn't financially do it. So, it was really cool that the community had really helped us out, and we've had wonderful coverage by, I think it was KTVN that covered for, covered the event for us, and we look forward to, we got invited to apply for the Rome trip in a couple of years, if we get the opportunity.
Oh, good, what a great experience.
Yeah, the kids had a wonderful time, and to see them be that excited when they performed and marched through Trafalgar Square, there was 600,000 individuals that was there the day of the parade, and it was on 5 million telecasts across the world.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dare.
Well, I just want to give a quick plug for him too, is, one, he's a saint, taking 80 people plus on a road trip, that's pretty amazing. But I'll do a shameless plug for anybody out there, I know they're doing a big fundraiser coming up, trying to make sure they get a trailer, and so if you're out there and you want to donate, I know Reed High School has a lot of good things going on. So, let me read this to you. Whereas the Edward C. Reed High School Raider Band is one of the largest high school music programs in Northern Nevada, and whereas this past November, the Reed Raider Band was awarded 4A at the Northern Nevada Championships at the University of Nevada Arena, due to their success over the past four years, the Reed Raider Band was invited to participate in the 34th Annual London New Year's Day Parade. On January 1st, 2020, the band performed in front of a half million people on the streets of London and was seen by more than 5 million people across the world. And whereas the Reed Raider Band had an amazing cultural experience that is sure to inspire them to continue traveling and learning for the rest of their lives, now therefore, Christopher Dare, representing Ronald Smith, he's the mayor of Sparks, he hereby proclaims this day, Edward C. Reed High School Raider Band Day for, in March 2020.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that, thank you.
Good job.
Well, I hope you get to go to Rome, I think that'd be wonderful.
We're really, really excited.
Good.
We took the band to Hawaii two years ago as a.
Eh, you didn't invite me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're going to go back again.
Okay, okay, let me know.
As a test trip, because it wasn't as far, but thank you so much.
Thank you, congratulations. He's going to have a picture right here.
They said we all can go to Rome with us.
Okay.
As long as we start practicing on our instruments.
You can go just to watch, we had so many families in the audience, it was awesome, but if you want to perform, you definitely can. I got my recorder still.
You can, you can wear your short dress.
Drum major. I can play the comb in the spoons.
Thank you so much.
Are you going to have a special patch made for their?
That's the goal, it's also something that I'm doing, and I know the trip costs $295,000, and we paid it, it really was covering. Getting a little commemorative things for the kiddos, but yeah, they should be getting a picture, and also, you guys, do a lesson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys so much, thank you so much.
Thank you. That's pretty cool. Okay, 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5, Mr. Croods.
Mayor Smith and members of the council, we have three vacancies on various boards throughout the city. The first one is the Building Code Board of Appeals, we have one vacancy on that committee where we are looking for either a registered professional engineer with electrical experience, or an electrical contractor with at least 10 years of experience. The term for that vacancy will begin the end of March of this year and run through the 31st of March of 2022. Applications for that position will be accepted through 5:00 p.m. on Friday, February 28th. The next one up is for the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee, there is one vacancy for the Ward 3 alternate position there. This position, the term for this position will run through November of this year, November 2020, and the alternate attends the meetings for the purpose of having a voting representative there from Ward 3 if the regular member can't, can't be present. We will accept applications for that position through this Friday, the 14th, at 5:00 p.m. And then finally, our Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee, we have a vacancy there where we are looking for a member with experience in the commercial construction industry, and that term runs through December 31st of 2023. Applications for that position will also be accepted through this Friday, the 14th, at 5:00 p.m. If you're interested in applying for any of these positions, please complete a community services application available either by picking it up physically in our city clerk's office across the courtyard at City Hall, or you can apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Once you're there, click on Government, then under Boards and Commissions, click on Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission, fill out the online form, and hit Submit. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Neil. Okay, moving on to consent items, anybody want to pull one? Looking for a motion, Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.4 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second the motion, please.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, move on to general business, 9.1. Consideration, discussion, and possible acceptance of a grant, AC 5652, from the Nell J. Redfield Foundation. Shawna, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and Councilmember Shawna Nelson, Recreation Manager. I'm before you with a recommendation to accept funding from the Nell J. Redfield Foundation in the amount of $16,150. This is funding that goes to support our Leisure Without Limits programs. We do several Leisure Without Limits programs throughout the year, they're programming for people with disabilities, so we do theme dances, we have weekly bowling program and an art program, we have an annual event at the Marina Mark Wellman Adventure Day. So, it's a really valuable set of funds, and it's very much appreciated by the population that it serves. We've been receiving this funding from Nell J. Redfield since about 2009, so it's been a really great partnership. Yeah, so we really appreciate it, and with that, I just want to acknowledge them and thank them for their continued support. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, otherwise, I'd like to recommend that we accept the funding in the amount of $16,150 for the calendar year 2020 for the Leisure Without Limits programs.
Any, any questions or comments? What a great foundation they are, I mean, they, they like clockwork with this. Okay, looking for a motion, Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve the grant from the Neil Redfield Foundation in the amount of $16,150.
Okay, I have a motion, I'm looking for a second. Ms. Bybee.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks, Shawna.
Thank you very much.
Okay, 9.2, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a construction contract, AC 5651, with Building Control Services. Brian.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council, for the record, my name is Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. The project before you consists of upgrades to the existing Allerton control system at the Sparks Police Department. As you recall, back on January 13th, you approved a construction contract for upgrades to the existing HVAC, HVAC system, and this does correlate with that, and, and we'll upgrade the, the control system pertaining to the HVAC system upgrades. Going back to just a little bit of history, this building was constructed back in 1991, and then in 2007, the original control system began to fail, and the city decided that Allerton controls would be a better fit for that building. It's proven to be a very good system, and we've actually expanded that to multiple buildings throughout the city. We're up to nine different buildings that are on that control system. Ultimately, it does provide uniformity and software maintenance, along with the parts, and then maintains continuity between the buildings. NRS 332.115 does allow the city to sole source this because, basically, there's only one authorized company that provides and sells and installs and maintains this Allerton control system, and that company is the Building Control Services, or BCS. With that, basically, staff recommends council approve the proposal provided by Building Control Services in the amount of $93,500 to upgrade the Allerton control system at the Sparks Police Department, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments? Mr. Dare.
I'm ready to make a motion, if you'd like.
Okay.
And so, I move to approve a construction contract to Building Control Services Incorporated to provide upgrades to the existing HVAC system controls at the Sparks Police Department in the amount of $93,500.
Okay, I have a motion, looking for a second. Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, 9.3, consideration, discussion, and possible ratification of the city manager's authorization of an expenditure of $71,500 to Titan Electric Contracting. Well, you're not Ron.
Not Ron.
But it's okay. Welcome.
He's hiding over there. Mayor, members of council, Mark Anderson, your Assistant Public Works Manager, here to seek approval of $71,500 out of the risk fund to pay our contractor Titan Electric for emergency supplies and repairs rendered during traffic signal outage in September of 2019. In September, we experienced an electrical storm, and if you'd look at the monitors, that was where the lightning bolt struck, that is our detection system on the southbound pole at Prater and McCarran. If you remember those cables they're hanging from, they're supposed to be mounted up in the top in the mounts. This is the camera, this is where, there's supposed to be a van that holds these to those mounts, and it melted them off of there. This is a picture of the cameras, the one on the left, you can see the lens blown out, the one on the right is just burned. This is the cable that carried the voltage down into our signal cabinet, and this is some of the resulting damage. This is our pit isolators to keep the voltage in the cabinet, not going out to the pit buttons, and this is just some bracketing that was melted by the strike. And this is the, basically, the pit computer, the computer that controls our pit system, you can see that melted the box to the shelf. The signal is owned by NDOT and maintained by us through an interlocal agreement. If you choose to approve this, we will be seeking repayment from NDOT through this interlocal agreement. With this, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Mr. Anderson.
Move to ratify the city manager's authorization of expenditure of $71,500 to Titan Electrical Contracting for replacement parts and labor to repair, replace components of the traffic signal at McCarran and Prater due to the lightning strike.
Okay, we have a motion, I'm looking for a second. Mr. Dare.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Mr. Dare.
That's incredible. I'm glad that nobody was up on there working on that. And I, I do want to say the one thing we do know, if anybody's wondering, is that when we say, see, we had a big conversation about this, we, we should get that money back, we definitely have stuff that's covered like that, and so hopefully, we get that back soon, it goes right back into our account, so.
Correct, this is our initial trial of this interlocal agreement.
Ms. Bybee.
So, Mark, just to clarify, when the incident happened, the city manager authorized an emergency expenditure, so it was fixed pretty quickly, and this is to reimburse?
We had it back up and running within 12 hours.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, did you make a motion, Mr. Dare, or did you just ask a question?
I seconded it, and I was discussion.
Who made the motion? Mr. Anderson, I knew that. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you, sir. Okay. 9.4, consideration, discussion, and possible authorization to refund the Washoe County School District impact fees collected for the John C. Bohatch Elementary School building permit in the amount of $314,422.76. John.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members, John Erickson, City Engineer.
City councilmembers, John Erickson, city engineer. Um, when the, the elementary school came in for permitting, we accidentally made the error of collecting, uh, regional road impact fees as well as, um, impact fee service area number-one fees in the amount of the, the little over three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars. Um, of that, there's two-hundred-and-forty-five, just a little over two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars that was collected in the regional road impact fees. The, the remainder, uh, of the sixty-eight thousand, um, was out of I F S A number-one. Um, the good news is, is that the cash is sitting in accounts here at the city. Um, we have not swept all the R T C funds over to the R T C yet for the last quarter of F Y nineteen, eh, as well as the, the cash is sitting in I F S A one accounts. So, we'll be able to cut a check to the school district, assuming that, that you folks approved the authorization to refund the, the, the dollars. Um, we could get that in a check run this week. Um, the one thing that we have done is, uh, we've made a correction in our, um, in our programming system that, that does the building, um, permits, um, so that if a school district piece of property comes up, it throws a flag up to where we can't, um, assess any impact fees to the school district. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Ms. Bybee.
So, have, has this happened before? Is it our new permitting system that didn't catch it, and we've made those adjustments? Or have, have we had it with any other schools in the past?
This hasn't happened before. We just haven't built a school in, gosh, in twenty years, if not longer. Um, and so, the, the, the middle school, we didn't assess the fees. It was just a clerical error, and then, um, we found a solution to where we don't make the same error when the, the, uh, high school comes in, because, uh, the, the permit fees for that will pale in comparison to what we're going to reimburse the county with right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion? Just, Ms. Abbott.
I move to approve a refund to the Washoe County School District for impact fees collected for the John C. Bohatch Elementary School building permit in the amount of three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty, or, three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay, I have a motion looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, John. Okay, nine-point-five is the first reading. Madam Clerk.
This is the first reading of Bill number two-seven-seven-two, an ordinance to amend Title Twenty of the Sparks Municipal Code to revise definitions and the map, permitted uses, and sign standards for the M U D, Mixed Use District Zoning District, C A dash-three-dash-nineteen.
Okay, public hearing for this bill, two-seven-seven-two, for its consideration and possible approval, will be held at the regular city council meeting scheduled for Monday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Nine-point-six, Madam Clerk.
This is the first reading of Bill number two-seven-six-nine, an ordinance for approval of the Development Agreement Amendment Number One pursuant to N R S two-seven-eight dot zero-two-zero-one between the City of Sparks, Q K L L C, and Five Ridges Development Company Incorporated, providing for planning and development of a site three-hundred-and-eighty-six-point-eight-seven acres in size located at five-five-five Highland Ranch Parkway, Sparks, Nevada.
Public hearing on this bill, number two-seven-six-nine, for its consideration and possible approval will be held at the regular city council meeting scheduled for Monday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. Okay, we'll move on to public hearing, ten-point-one. This is the second reading. Public hearing, discussion, and possible adoption of Bill number two-seven-seven-one.
Good afternoon.
Lisa.
Sorry. I'm fighting a cold, so I apologize. Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of council, Lisa Hunterman, your city clerk, for the record. Pursuant to N R S two-ninety-three-C and the Sparks City Charter, all municipal elections must be under the control of the city council, and city council must set by ordinance, um, must set an ordinance that provides for the holding of the election, as well as other items required to carry out the election in full. Bill number two-seven-seven-one, which creates this ordinance, does four things. First, it sets the filing fees for municipal offices at thirty dollars, which is in accordance with the Nevada state fee schedule. Second, it sets the date of the primary election as June ninth, twenty-twenty, and the general election as November third, twenty-twenty, which is in alignment with all other state and federal elections. The third thing it does is identifies the following municipal offices that will be seeking candidates. Municipal court judge in Department One, council members in wards one, three, and five, and a city attorney. Lastly, with the recent addition of same-day voter registration, as well as the costs associated with staffing polling locations full-time, acquiring, um, voting machines, and the printing and distribution of ballots, um, it is not cost-effective for the city to conduct the election on its own. Um, as Washoe County is required to conduct an election, this city reduces costs associated with the election by contracting with Washoe County to allow the register of voters to conduct the election for the city. Um, this bill acknowledges the inter-local agreement, which was approved by city council on January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, authorizing Washoe County to conduct the election. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll open up the public comment period. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee.
I move to adopt Bill two-seven-seven-one, an ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of a primary election in the City of Sparks on the ninth day of June, twenty-twenty, and a general election in the City of Sparks on the third day of November, twenty-twenty, identifying municipal offices seeking candidates, authorizing Washoe County to conduct the election, and setting the filing fees for candidacy declaration.
Okay, I have a motion looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion, is second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Lisa. Okay, nope, we have no planning zoning public hearings. We'll move on to public comment. I'll open up the public comment period. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Come on down, ma'am. Just turn in your card to the clerk, and then state your name, fours, and... Welcome.
I think it's on.
Yep.
Joanna Schumacher from Sparks. And, um, I'm here regarding, well, to express my concerns regarding five G and the technology that, um, I'm, uh, I'm worried that the city will be beguiled by the fees and lovely money that they extend your way. Um, I know some of the council members have already heard from men and women in Sparks whose health, safety, and welfare you are charged with regarding the medical, um, issues that are involved in this technology. But I'd like to address some of the things that might not have occurred to you, one of which, um, the Sparks Fire Department, um, had issues with the smart meters. Um, there, it was filed with the Public Utility Commission, supposedly investigated by the Nevada, um, fire chief. But when you further investigate, the fire chief did not investigate either Reno or Sparks issues regarding the smart meter. This is similar technology to what's going on with the five G. Um, Lloyds of London, who indemnifies most insurance companies, have now stated that they will not cover any R F technology issues. That's medical, that's if your house burns down, that's anything. So, we're dealing with a new technology that has no insurance coverage, possibly, at this point. Because of Lloyds of London, where Lloyds leads, they all follow. All the insurance companies will follow, and put that as a clause in their insurance policies. That puts the burden back on those who are supposed to protect us, which is the city council, the county commissions, and the state of Nevada. We're in a situation right now where, um, the technology is moving so fast that the rest of the information is not catching up with it. And we're leaping before we really look. Um, I would implore the city council to, uh, consider greatly whether to participate in the five G technology. They're going to want to ask you to put it up on your phone poles and on your, on your lighting fixtures and whatever, because they need to have the five G technology very close together in order for it to work properly. Um, that's a problem, especially because you're not notifying the citizens of something that's going on. So, they don't notice a tiny little device placed up on the lighting pole, and they can't relate, oh, is this what caused my power surge and my TV to blow out? Is this what caused my daughter to get leukemia? You know, they can't make a, a connection. There's no notification. It just suddenly is there, and they can't make a connection. Thank you.
Go ahead, you can finish your thought.
Oh, uh, just, uh, I, just to wrap it up, if you want more information, I can provide you with what Lloyds did. This is pretty old news. It's about five or six years ago. So, if you want any information, please feel free to contact me.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Manager, I don't, I, I don't have the card, so I don't know her name. Could you have somebody explain our options that we have as a city?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Anybody? Ms. Bybee.
Um, I would just like to thank our firefighters for being out there, climbing stairs, uh, raising money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Association. This weekend, there was a guy stopped by. I didn't climb the stairs, two bad knees, so I wasn't gonna climb, but wanted to make, you know, support. And to see the families out there, it was such a great, uh, family event. The kids were super excited with the engine out there. And when I was talking to your firefighters that were there, uh, they relayed a story that really, um, meant, meant a lot, and I think it will to, you know, to all of us, is that last, um, late last week, the, uh, the horrible traffic accident on Pyramid Highway that they used the brand-new, um, Jaws of Life equipment that we were given through, uh, Firehouse Subs. And they were working side by side, the Truckee, Truckee Meadow Fire had responded. And they said the time that they were able to extricate and get that car open was like so much faster and so much more efficiently. And, and, and he just wanted to share, um, thanks to us for approving it. Obviously, thanks to Firehouse for giving us that. But to see that everyone was trained, just trained, and we had to use it, and we're hoping we don't have to, but knowing that we did, I thought was, uh, was a nice success story and was worth, you know, worth everything, you know, just the first time out. But thank, thank the firefighters for being there, too, the money they raised. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? You know, if you don't mind, I'll take a personal moment here. Um, every meeting, we have an invocation speaker, and they always pray for my health. Well, the average person has cancer markers from zero to thirty-five. Mine started off at twenty-five-hundred. Now down to one-oh-two. So, I'm doing fine, and I want to thank you, I can feel your prayers. Without objection, we are adjourned.